This fresh coat of the startup life has been sprayed on nice and smooth by Wagner and the Flexio series of paint sprayers. Startup Nation, my wife decided she wanted to rehab her childhood home. The goal was to fix it up and invite a nice family to rent it out. We knew one of the biggest jobs we had to undertake was painting. However, from the walls, the cabinets, and even the siding outside, it was going to be a big task. As entrepreneurs with a company to run, we knew this was going to take up a lot of our time, which is why we decided to get a paint sprayer. And after much research, we decided to go with the sprayer from the Flexio series from Wagner. Startup Nation, these sprayers are top notch because of its flexibility to paint or stain walls, furniture, cabinets, and more. It's 10 times faster than using a paintbrush, which was a big selling point for us. And you can paint or stain right from the can. It's also easy to clean in five minutes. And being grateful indoor and outdoor projects, a paint sprayer from the Flexio series clearly needs to be part of the arsenal in your garage. So if you're ready to stay in your deck, or like me, fill your daughter's request of a bubble gum pink room, up your game with a paint sprayer from the Flexio series by Wagner. Take it from me, your time will thank you.
It's time to be about that life, the startup life. Here's your host, Dominic Lawson.
All right, Startup Nation, I hope you're ready to receive some value today. My name is Dominic Lawson and this is the Startup Life, the show for entrepreneurs and career minded professionals. And you know Startup Nation, we're going to go in a different direction today. We're going to focus on leadership today. Look, with everything going on, COVID-19, social unrest, if there was ever a time we needed great leadership, Startup Nation, it is now. And we have a fantastic guest to help us out with that. She is an amazing educator, I'm sorry, she is an amazing educator and rising political superstar that calls the great city of Memphis home. She sits on the Memphis City Council representing District Seven. And she was recently named to the Memphis Business Journal prestigious list of 40 under 40. She is my good friend, Michaelan Easter Thomas, superstar. How's it going, M E T?
I'm doing well. How are you, Dominic?
I'm living the dream, ma'am. I'm living the dream.
You are. You are.
I appreciate that. And before we get started, you know, I just want to say, you know, we've known each other for a few years now. And to see, you know, all the amazing work you have done in the community and the city and stuff like that. I cheers to you, ma'am. I am in awe of you. I am in awe of what you do. And I'm super excited to have you on the show. And I just wanted to say for whatever it means, I am super duper proud of you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. A lot of it is thankless, but I definitely appreciate, you know, real genuine people like yourself really just seeing the work that I and others are putting in in the city.
Absolutely, absolutely, for sure. And before we get started, I just want to say, or ask you rather, are you ready to pour some knowledge into Startup Nation today? Because when it comes to leadership and stuff like that, we could definitely use a little bit of help.
I can, I can need some help. I need some help too. That's why I like listening to your podcast and the other folks. But yes, I am, I am ready to do all of that and then some for that.
Sounds great. Sounds great. So let's get started. So you know, if we could just kind of share with us your origin story, you know, who is the great M E T? Kind of share with us a little bit about your background and growing up.
So I am from Memphis. I love to say that I'm from North Memphis. As you know, that every neighborhood has their own just specific way of, of touting themselves.
Absolutely.
When talking to anybody else. But I think that growing up in North Memphis and Frazier really put a stamp on the way that I see things, how I view community, how I view family, and then also just the processes of how our lives intertwine with government and the public sector.
For sure.
Fully matriculated through Memphis City Schools. Went to a couple, they ended up at Christian Brothers University.
Right.
Here in Memphis to get my degree in history. And use that to then go on to Columbia University in New York to receive my master's of arts in teaching, social studies, seven through 12. And then my first actual job was a teaching job in the Bronx. And so that was awesome. But it also made, made me just realize, you know, kids are really the same. They all, they all really need the same thing. And it's all about how the administration responds to those needs, how the government responds to those needs.
Right.
And so I came back to Memphis a little earlier than expected in 2014 and started a nonprofit focused in North Memphis just for progression. And that nonprofit grew out of civil unrest of a few neighborhood citizens that had found out about a Memphis housing authority plan to demolish a certain sector of homes in the Klondike area. But no one had heard of any community input, any meetings or such. And so we penned a letter that we sent to over 200 government and public sector officials. And the response to that was that the MHA head at that point then retracted the statement of the plan. They, they didn't call it a plan. They called it an idea. And then we heard nothing else from that. But what they showed us was that, one, people are always going to try to fly things by you.
Right.
Without you, without you looking at, without you noticing. But then also that voices, collective voices are integral and strong when you're trying to make a change. And so on that premise, our grass, our roots, the nonprofit was founded 2014. And since 2014 in North Memphis and Frazier, we've just been collaborating, pushing that information and ensuring that our voices are heard collectively when it comes to projects that are coming in any of our, any of our neighborhood areas.
For sure, for sure. Thank you for sharing that. You know, Startup Nation, you know, and I joke with Michaelan about this all the time. I know for a fact she cares about North Memphis. Literally, the first words I ever heard Michaelan say was, what about North Memphis? So I, I, I know, no, seriously, that, that's true talk. I can't remember where we were, but it was like a, like a conference or something like that. But those were the first words I ever heard you speaking. Ever since then, you know, I was like, I gotta watch out for her. She, she, she's about to make some, uh, some big waves here in this city. And, uh, you know, I, I am so glad to see your rise and stuff like that. So for sure. And thank you for sharing that. I, I do, you know, I'm very familiar with the, your nonprofit and all the work that you do there in North Memphis. So I appreciate you sharing all of that for sure. You know, really quickly, I want to ask a follow up. Kind of talk about, uh, you know, you as an educator, you, you talk about, you know, the kids and their needs and stuff like that. Kind of talk about, you know, some of that, uh, some of the things that you really like about educating and, uh, and dealing with young people and stuff like that.
Well, I, when I discuss education, sometimes it doesn't even seem like education. I just, I try to put it in a common sensible way.
Okay.
And so how I approach it is I'm trained in seven through 12, but all of my teaching has been to 11th grade.
Gotcha.
And so I love 11th graders. They're, they're at that point of where, you know, they're not freshmen, so immature coming in. They're not seniors. They, they don't have senioritis or they're, they're just stuck. But 11th grade is like that year where it's like, it's something, a light bulb kind of turns on. And it's like you, it's the realization that I need to really hone down and see where my life is going because I have one year to make it, to make it such. So what I would do in my classrooms and I taught US history, world history, AP history, economics, government, I would give them all the information that I had, all the information that I could find and allow them an atmosphere of where you are encouraged and supported to come to your conclusion on it.
Gotcha.
Based on the evidence and the facts that you have.
Right.
And essentially that's what, you know, adults should be doing anyway.
Absolutely.
But it's about, it's about, um, I'm not, you know, forcing my ideals on you, but I'm giving you all of the facts. And then I'm allowing you actual space to talk with your peers, bringing other individuals inside the classroom, having robust discussions to really see and make these connections throughout history. Because as we look at especially now 2020, like last year, we were before school, you know, getting disrupted. We were discussing how this looks so similarly to 1920.
Right.
The, the government, the offices of the Gilded Age, the, the way that people are spending in the economy, the, the way that businesses are not concerned with the health and wealth of their employees. Like everything just looked so similarly different. Graph bribery and, and other such in the executive office. But it, I just, I just like to allow for people to come to their conclusions based on factual evidence and making their decision. Um, a lot of times when we talk about how can we help folks, sometimes we may go to the assumption that they know better.
Right.
But sometimes we don't, sometimes people don't know better. Sometimes people don't have their information. So if you can't provide all of the information, then how are you expecting somebody to make a decision? And so if we want our kids to make better decisions, we need to provide them with information, with opportunities, with exposure. So that once you have it all, once you can see it, then if you make the wrong decision, then we can, we can figure out whose fault that is. But at this point, everybody has a hand in it. Everybody has a role in it. If anybody is contributing to not getting our students in Memphis all that they need and deserve.
Got you. Got you.
That's my, that's my take on education.
Well, I got you. And I appreciate that. And you know, it, it's so fitting that, you know, uh, that you majored in history and, and you, you teach history and stuff like that. Uh, and because the thing is, you know, and, and the generation that you're teaching, right? Because we're seeing Generation Z or the Zoomers, I guess they are, are being affectionately called. We're seeing them taking an active approach, uh, and, uh, in, uh, being civic minded, being proactive and, and things of that nature. Let me ask you this, you know, as they go forth and you're teaching them and stuff like that, how, how are you helping to guide those who want to be civic minded, who want to be, uh, the next Michaelan Easter Thomas? Like what are, what are some of those approaches to help? Not necessarily frame or indoctrinate what they think, but how they go about and being proactive, uh, in their community, uh, in their country and, and beyond.
Right. So it's, it's kind of hard because you know, you don't want to get in legal trouble in the public school system.
Of course, of course.
And so during my campaign, I was having to draw a start, a staunch line in what I could do and what I could say.
Right.
That would lean, lean suit us the other way. But I would simply just ask and talk to them about, what do you care about? Because the thing about politics is that you're not going to care unless you have a personal connection. And that's with a lot of things. You don't care about something if you don't have a personal connection.
Very true.
So I would, instead of saying, you need to vote because, you know, the ancestors died for you. There's no personal connection there. Um, you need to vote because your vote matters. Well, there, there might not be a personal connection there. But if I ask you, what do you care about? And then you tell me you care about transportation to and from school and your job. You care about you having a job. You care about your parents having a job. You care about healthcare. You care about the potholes in the street. You care about our school not looking like the municipal school. Um, and then we, we connect it. So once I, once I understand what you care about, then I get to, once again, to that information and opportunities and exposure. Then we can discuss how all of that is related to who we vote in office.
Right.
And seeing what, what positions really have an impact on the things that you care about. And then brainstorming and strategy, okay, well, how involved do you want to be in this change? Do you just want your involvement to be a vote and getting your friends to vote? Or do you want to do something further? Do you want to join an initiative? Do you want to support a group? But none of that can happen if one, you're not giving people all the information that they should be privy to. But then also showing how you have to have personal connection with politics in order to feel as though it really matters. And I think this year we're seeing a big shift in that. And it's just wonderful to watch. Um, I let a lot of previously graduated students follow me on Facebook. And one, because you know, I, I get to be nosy and I get to, I get to see what you're doing and, and then messages like, ah, you might not want to put that on there. But then I also get to show them what I'm doing civically. And how I'm engaged and since they know me personally. Um, since you just spent 180 days, a one hour a day with me in your past life. Now you have a connection and it doesn't seem as though politics are, is what's done to you.
Right.
Now you can start to see is, okay, how can I be involved because I am politics? I am democracy. It's not something that, that done to me is something that I can be involved with. Folks just need to know how.
I hear that. Thank you for sharing that. And you know, when you, when you talk about, uh, you know, engaging with your students, even now after they've graduated, stuff like that, it is always, it always amazes me that, uh, it just seems like the, the best educators never stop teaching. The best educators never stop worrying about their kids and, and stuff like that. But I imagine that makes sense because like each one of those kids that you impart wisdom on and you talk to and, and you pour into, they're part of your legacy. That's fair to say, right?
Yeah, definitely. Um, who you touch and
Right.
and who you make an impression on negative or positive, that's, that's you. Because that's what's going to be left. Like you said, that's your legacy. That's what's going to be left when you move on. Are those stories and, and that anecdotal
Right.
contribution to who you are or who you were.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing all of that for sure. And you know, you mentioned your campaigns. Uh, no, I would kind of want to talk about it just a little bit because, you know, Startup Nation, across the country, we are seeing, uh, a lot of like, you know, maybe first time candidates and stuff like that really kind of topple, you know, like incumbents, long time, uh, entrenched incumbents in certain places and stuff like that. You know, one of the big national ones, uh, from a few years ago is obviously AOC up there in New York. And you kind of had a similar experience here, uh, in the city of Memphis, uh, with your opponent a, as well, you know? And we won't get into like too many specifics unless you just want to. Uh, but I, I want to ask you this because we're, we're seeing this on the national level. We're seeing this at the grassroots level. What is it that's changing that people saying like, you know, I, I want something different, you know? Because after electing somebody for a long time who are more funded, bigger war chest in the, in the advertising game and, and stuff like that, what are people saying like, nah, I need something different? Like kind of talk about that journey a little bit, if you don't mind, Michaelan.
No problem. Um, I really attribute that to, I keep, I guess this is a theme I keep bringing it up, but connection.
Got you. Got you.
Especially with local, um, even, even state, any, anything besides executive, because it's really hard to have a connection there.
Right.
But even when we see the AOC examples, um, people hear like state rep, Mar, um, different senators. It's, it's a connection that, that you're making. And you have to have the trust of people for them to vote for you.
Right.
And as I, as I said throughout my campaign and even now, you can't trust someone that you can't communicate with.
Right.
And you can't communicate with somebody that you don't see.
Fair enough.
That you don't hear from. And so what I literally ran on was accessibility, listening and communication, interest.
Got you.
Because if I'm, one, I'm asking you what, what you need, what your wants are, what, what you're wanting to see so that you also can be successful in progress in this city. And I have to listen to those sentiments of different individuals in different parts of my district.
Right.
So then I can actually see what the issues are and then be able to start a path on fixing them and, and seeing how I can also communicate that back to the people who, who have the issue.
Right.
But I knew that my race was uh, I won't say crowded, you know, everybody has
It was a little deep.
legitimate right to run. Put their name on the paper to run. But that race outside of the mayor's race was the heaviest race in Memphis last year.
Right.
And so we had, did we have eight?
Something like that, yeah.
I think, I think we had eight.
Right. It was something like that. It was, it was almost 10 for sure. Cause like I said, I remember like, man, that's a deep race. There's a lot of, you have to choose from. Yeah.
And, and my thing was, you know, I, it wasn't something I jumped into. I had already been doing community work. I was talking with community leaders and neighborhood leaders about support.
Right.
But I also did some self-reflection time. I did a lot of prayer. I did a lot of fasting. Um, because something about me, if I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it 125%.
Right.
And if I can't do it to the fullest of my extent, I can't do it. Because I don't want my name on it. I don't want to be associated with, with something that, that doesn't fulfill what I, what I can do.
Absolutely.
Um, and that's not saying, you know, I knew that I was going to win, but I knew that I was going to put my best foot forward in everything. Even when it came down to designing the logo and, and the flyers.
Right.
I was like, you know, if, if I'm presenting something new and somebody that, that takes their time and someone who really wants to reflect that we're not just a bunch of North Memphis neighborhoods or we're not just a bunch of Frazier neighborhoods.
Right.
Even if something as simple as a flyer design, I don't want it to be raggedy. I want it to represent that we, whatever you think you might assume you can see in, um, popular area or out east or Cal越downtown. That's the same stuff we doing in North Memphis.
Right.
Same level of quality.
For sure.
Um, I was ripping and running to a million different events every day. Just to make sure I saw people, I, I got in their face, I got my name recognized. Because you people, like I said, people have to trust you in order to communicate. And they can't do either if you're not accessible and you're not visible. And me just knowing the prior issues that we've had in this district and then knowing what we have to fight going forward, that was really what drove me. Um, the whole campaign, I never mentioned anything about anyone I was running against.
Got you.
Because it wasn't about them. It wasn't about them. It wasn't about their comment. It was about the people. And the only thing I would discuss would be the people. Um, and I, and I made that, I made that pertinent because I just, I wanted people to know that this is not a, you know, it's not a competition for who can win against each other. If we're really trying to do what's best for our community, this is to see who's going to best represent our areas in the city government going forward. Um, because we have to get some progressive ideals in our local government. We have to get just the push towards the want and the will to do right. A lot of times it's not that, um, folks who came before didn't do anything.
Right.
Sometimes you just don't have the majority and the collective will to do right.
Fair enough.
You need, you need the numbers to get things across the board. So if two, if two or three folks want to do right, well, it's still 10, 11 people that they have to convince. And I think we're starting to see in a lot of different government and municipalities, we're starting to see more of the will to do right and to do the right thing. And, and that's inspiring for me. And so I'm seeing the difference in local politics and I'm just excited to play a part. I'm grateful to be in this seat and, and be able to do for my community what I said I was going to do.
For sure. For sure. And, and I appreciate you sharing that. And I want to ask one last question, a quick follow up, uh, uh, about the campaign. Because one of the things that I really admired during your campaign, because you know, like you said, it was a lot of people, uh, in the field. It was a very deep candidate field, uh, and it, it actually led to a runoff between you and the incumbent. But you actually were able to, you know, and, and it, it seems like you, you, you have always had, Michaelan, you've always had this very, uh, knack for consensus building, right? And it looks like you did that when you had the other candidates who didn't quite make the runoff. You built that consensus and it got them to rally around you, uh, to, to ultimately overtake that seat. I, I want to ask you this because you know, there's a lot of small business owners and there's a lot of, you know, people who may be thinking about running for office and stuff like that. And consensus building is so important. Walk me through some of those conversations, uh, through some of the other candidates who didn't make that runoff and, 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 and kind of convincing them that like, you know, this ain't about me. This is more about North Memphis District Seven and doing what's best for District Seven. Kind of walk me through some of those conversations a little bit, if you don't mind.
Right. And so those were, uh, hard conversations.
I bet.
And because it's, because it's not normal.
Right.
Right? It's not, it's not common to, to see that, especially in a, a heavy race.
Absolutely.
Um, and so that
That's why I thought it was so fascinating.
That initial race in October, um, we were second. And I went to everybody else. I didn't just pick, you know, who came right after me or next to people. I went to everybody because if you ran on the premise that you care.
Right.
Then I'm going to need you to care and keep that same energy that you had against the incumbent to work with me. Because if you're, if you're running, that means that if I were to win or if the other person was to win, you are the constituent.
Right.
So would you was a constituent, what do you need to see? Or what would you like to see? And do you think that I can help move the city towards that direction? And so if you can work with me, you know, we can help everybody. Any, I think any conversation that you have about consensus, it, it just has to really focus on how does this help the majority of folks? I can tell you all day how you, uh, coming out to endorse me is going to help me. Um, but how can this help other people? And I think sometimes, I know you talk about a lot, it's the pitch.
Right.
You know, how, how are you, how are you framing this? And then also are you being genuine in it as well? So that has to be a part of it. But those were hard conversations. Um, I was grateful that I think all, all but one, um, came to endorse, uh, publicly endorse. Um, they privately did it, but all but one came to publicly endorse. And I was grateful for that because I think that they also showed the public that wow, this isn't just, you know, a grimy political type thing. This is, folks really want change over here in District Seven.
Right.
They want it so bad as to all of them got together and say, you know what, we pushing forward. And the thing is now is that I keep up, I still keep up with, with my, with my former opponent.
Right.
Uh, because they're my constituents and their opinion matters. And they're all doing things in the community now that a lot of them I want to support. And I just want to make sure that they understand this is a communal thing. We, we have to have each other. Um, we have to lean on each other because it's enough. I know y'all talking about business and this ain't business, but it's enough business to go around.
Right.
It's enough consumers, um, it's enough customers, it's enough opportunity. But when you don't have the knowledge and the resources and the support, um, that's where a lot of us tend, in my opinion, tend to fall short. And then when we do get a grasp on a little bit of information, on a little bit of opportunity, a little bit of resources, it's like you got to hold on to that because you don't know if you're going to get anymore. Or you don't know if the person who you want to support you wants it all for themselves.
Right.
And then that comes back to, you know, being genuine and just being able to communicate and trust with each other that we want what's best for our people. And I truly think that they believe, and hopefully still do believe, and the other constituents, that I want what's best for my people in North Memphis.
For sure.
Memphis and Memphis especially.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for sharing all of that for sure. All right, Startup Nation. So we're going to go ahead and take a quick break. We got to pay some bills. Once again, my name is Dominic Lawson and you're listening to the Startup Life. Tresta powers this episode of the Startup Life. Okay, Startup Nation, I want to talk to you about our sponsor, Tresta. Tresta is an app for iPhone and Android that lets you do business calling and texting from anywhere. I know so many entrepreneurs that are still using their, their personal phone number for business calls. It can get complicated drawing the line between your personal and professional life. Startup Nation, this is the best business phone app out there. Whether you just need a business phone number or if your team is ready for a complete business phone system, Tresta is totally flexible and can grow with your business. And it's all unlimited, calling, texting, and all of the powerful call management features like auto attendance, call recording, user groups, and more for just $15 per user per month. With Tresta, there's no contract and you don't need any special hardware. Just your smartphone you're already using. Tresta is easy to configure so you can set everything up yourself, all online, avoiding all the hassle and high overhead costs of setting up a traditional business phone system, which is important because as entrepreneurs, Which is important because as entrepreneurs, we are always trying to cut cost and time. They're offering a thirty day free trial, so you can see if Tresta's virtual phone system is right for you. Communicate smarter and more efficiently with Tresta. Start now at tresta.com/startuplife. That's T R E S T A dot com/startuplife. The link is there in the show notes if you're listening on the podcast. Tresta, business communication simplified. All right, Startup Nation, welcome back as we continue our conversation with today's guest here on The Startup Life. And once again, Startup Nation, we're talking to Councilwoman Michaela Easter Thomas here on The Startup Life. And so, you know, you talk about campaigning, and you talk about running the race and stuff like that, you get elected uh and and you get sworn in uh and everything, and the pageantry is beautiful and stuff like that, but now it's time to govern, right? And, you know, Councilwoman, you know, when you walked into the office, uh, you know, I mean, you already had a number of issues uh that was uh on your plate, you know, I I I think one of the big ones was, you know, right, exactly, exactly. I think one of the bigger ones uh that I can think of off the top of my head is the one where uh should uh uh public service like, you know, police officers and fire departments should live in the city and uh uh limits and stuff like that. But now we have this 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 pandemic, uh, you know, and we have this this health crisis obviously around the world and here in the city of Memphis, and you're uh uh dealing with like things like people wearing masks and and things of that nature. Talk about governing, uh, Councilwoman in 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 moments where you's like, man, I wasn't expecting this, like this just came out of nowhere. You know, talk about, you know, jumping into the fire, you know what I mean? So kind of talk about that, talk about that experience a little bit.
Uh, I think every day would be a oh. But I'm a, I'm a lifelong learner. I I love connecting the dots and researching, and and so everything that new that comes along just gives me another opportunity to dig deeper, ask more questions. And that's really the only way that we're going to get to proper governing. Because actually with city council, the only actual technical thing that you have to do are passing the budget, reviewing and passing the budget. Um, everyday meticulous things such as budget expenditures or um MLGW expenditures. And then responding to constituents. That's all you really have to, you really only have to respond to constituents. That's all you really have to do. Um, however, but when you start trying to get to the root of an issue, trying to see why we're in the state that we're in, then that comes the fun part. And so that's when I like to get to go through council records and see, well, how did this environmental um industrial plant get in this South or North Memphis neighborhood in the first place? And so how how is it able to be done? And has that, how has it impacted the area? Does that connect to why we see less budget expenditures in this certain line item in this neighborhood now? Um, and so just being able to connect some things and see the broader picture and just get some context. But it's so much this year, especially with COVID. Um, because now it's not just the learning curve, it's not just um being new, young and black and a woman, which gets you dismissed a lot of times um by so many people. And it's, on top of that, you have people who are dying and suffering from the other impacts of COVID. And so it's it's that balance of, yes, I know we have to have a stable and balanced budget in the city, but we got six hundred and eighty thousand residents. Majority of them black and poor, and they're getting laid off, or they're cutting hours. Or their kids don't have internet, or they're part of the digital divide in their home and their neighborhood. So it's just so many issues that I would say have arisen during COVID. But it's really giving people time and specific focus to not ignore these issues. So they, the issue's already been there, right? Poverty's already been there, uh, food desert's already been there, digital divide. But now, now we gotta tackle it. Now we we can't turn away from it. You know, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to fix it, but you can't turn your eyes away from it. We couldn't turn our eyes away from the only folks in Memphis who don't have access to internet stay in the poor black neighborhood. We 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 can't, you can't ignore stuff like that.
To a virtual uh classroom, move coming to for the for the new school year. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to add that in.
No, I agree, I agree with that. And then also, when you talk about, okay, well, let's all go virtual and let's all get a laptop, problem solved, no. Because now the problem facing you as a governing official is now you got to wonder why parents are scrambling to figure out where is their child going to sit six, seven day, six, seven hours a day and learn virtually because of the way our economy is set up in this city. So so it's it's like, it's just furthering exacerbating, just peeling off the layers, because like, yeah, we got jobs. Jobs that don't have no, no hea- no, no good health insurance, um, no, no good retirement benefit. Um, jobs that are heavy on your your physique and your physical ability. Jobs that don't, may or may not provide middle-class wages. Um, so we're just peeling back the layers in government, and I think this year, not just efficiency, but empathy is really something that a lot of our governing officials are gonna have to marry with the efficiency of government. And it's not an easy feat. But I will say that I know a lot of my colleagues, just from discussing with them and on the county side and state side, well, a lot of them are up for the challenge, and that's the optimistic part of it. Um, I I I haven't talked to a lot of people who are are pessimistic about how it's going overall. But who are just optimistic on what they're trying to do in their role and how we can all work together to try to alleviate whatever we can for our people.
Right, right. Thank, thank you for sharing that. And you know, one, one, you you're absolutely right. When you talk about uh the digital divide and having internet and how, you know, uh, kids are gonna uh be able to do that virtual classroom and stuff like that. I know one of the things that I think about, like, maybe you do have access to the internet, but what if you have three children, school age, and one laptop? Like, you know,
Well, they're giving, they're gonna give them to each one. Also, just because you got a laptop, don't mean you know how to use it.
That's true, that's true, that is fair.
Now we gotta look at, are we gonna penalize further students for being behind? I mean, the academic gap is already is wide, wider than it should be. But now we have to add on the fact that now you're gonna be judged by what you do virtually. But we, as a city and a school system and as a community, have not prepared you to do that fully efficiently virtually. So, um, it's gonna take, it's gonna take the whole community. And this is going on nationwide, but as far as Memphis, it's gonna take the whole community to support our babies this year. Um, because they're, they're gonna need it.
For sure, for sure. And and you know, and you're absolutely right, you know, Councilwoman, because we talked about how COVID has exposed or exacerbated many issues uh from the digital divide, uh, from, you know, economic standpoint and stuff like that. But one of the biggest things, and you've been extremely outspoken about this, it it's about race, uh, and how Black Lives Matter and stuff like that. Kind of talk about your approach and and speaking uh uh on that subject, on that matter, uh, and being unapologetic about it. Because you 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 have not, uh, you know, you have not now, nor have you ever held punches on this uh on this notion.
Well, I'm I'm glad that I'm being consistent and that you see that. Um, but I don't, I don't think it's something that you that you have to hold, hold back from. It's it's a yes or no question. It's not one of those things where you can agree to disagree. You can't, you can't, you can't agree to disagree on whether Black Lives Matter, period. So it's either they do or they don't. And then once you say yes, then you have to show it in your actions, your policies, your guidelines, your your everyday legislature, your money. So if they, if if Black Lives do matter, how is that shown in our government system? Our legal system, our criminal justice system, our election system, our economy, our businesses, our nonprofits, our grants. If your, if your actions don't show that Black Lives Matter, then you just already answered the question. And in Memphis, that's, that's what we are. We're black. Like, we, Memphis is majority black. We are black. This is a chocolate city. And if we, if we tend to ignore constantly the black folks here, you know, where where is that gonna get us in the future? And and that's for anyone, um, other races, ethnicities, also other socioeconomic levels. Um, all black people matter. And so the the issue is that that has to be said. So if it didn't have to be said, that mean folks would be doing what's right. But since, since we gotta say it, it mean somebody ain't doing something right, and they need to be called out and they need to fix it. And that happens a lot through the election process, um, but that also happens to happens through what already elected officials are doing within their own governments. We have so many black leaders in this city. From um hospital presidents to DOs, to um management of corporations, to elected officials, to the school district. Black people are in leadership in a majority of positions in this city. We should not have to say, or even act, do Black Lives Matter. And sometimes we act it to black people. And sometimes those, some of those black people tell us no, through their actions and what they're doing. So everybody needs to be held accountable, um, and if Black Lives really do matter, then it should be shown.
Gotcha. You know, uh, if I could ask a follow up, because you talked about, you know, you know, uh, engaging with your colleagues, uh, uh, you know, whether it be in the the city council or in the county commission for Shelby County uh here in Tennessee. Kind of talk about, you know, and obviously you don't have to, you know, don't have to go on specifics, you know, stuff like that. But kind of talk about what those conversations are 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 sounding like, even not even with those colleagues, but even with the mayor, in that executive spot for uh the city of Memphis, that city of Memphis that you just said, that is a uh majority black uh city, a chocolate city, uh, if you will. Kind of talk about those conversations in how uh, you know, we're moving forward, trying to govern and 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 show the city of Memphis that Black Lives uh do matter and that there are certain, there have been for a long time, certain uh barriers to entry, whether it be for black businesses, certain barriers of entry for just economic prosperity as a whole, education. Kind of talk about those conversations with your colleagues and in the mayor, and with the mayor, if you don't mind.
Um, well, the most recent conversation, well, the ongoing conversation is how can we really help people during COVID? So my colleagues and I have came up with numerous ways of how we're assisting folks in Memphis through, whether it's through MLGW Utility Assistance. Um, also the Housing Community Relent Division, Paul Young, and those with Shelby County Community Services came up with the landlord or eviction settlement owner. And also we we put money towards emergency payments for BD and barber and and spa employees and entrepreneurs. So just thinking of ways that we can use what we have now to help during COVID. And I think that that has shown to an extent that we're saying, yes, your life matters, we see this, we're empathetic. Let's see what we can do. Um, however, as far as facing the bigger picture, I think we have work to do. Um, I I think that we would do ourselves a disservice and our constituents a disservice to use those few things that we've done this year to how do I want to put this? To to say that we've done our part. We haven't done nearly enough, and that's me included in in that as well, because like you're saying, it's still so many barriers. It's still so many unanswered questions that we have to look this thing straight in the face and say that a lot of these barriers, these problems, these issues are based on racism in our city. And we have to undo that. It's it's nothing wrong with with facing a problem head on and saying, this is wrong. We need to change this. And I do not think so far, in my opinion, that we, anybody, um, our office or mayor's administration has really called that out yet. Straightforward to say that we need to really undo this to take Memphis forward. It hasn't been done.
For sure, for sure. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman, for sharing all of that, uh, for sure. You know, uh, you know, I I I see that, you know, since you've been uh in office, uh, you kind of developed a a kinship with another uh fan favorite here of The Startup Life, who's also been on the show, Councilman uh JB Smiley. Kind of talk about uh your relationship with him and how you guys have kind of developed a kinship there uh on the council here in the city of Memphis, if you don't mind.
So I love JB. Um, he is such a, such a bright mind, such a a genuine spirit and just wanting to do the right thing. And I'm that type of person as well. I'm not as outgoing as he is. Which a lot of people like to make that stark difference if we're ever pictured next to each other. But his, his energy or synergy, rather, in this case, helps support the fact that we're moving forward in a new direction in Memphis. Um, if you asked him, and this, if this probably wasn't on the podcast, you say, oh, yeah, Mike, Michaela, she, she talks about me every day. You know, on social media, we're just on social media, we're commenting on everything, so I'm always uh taking small jabs at him if he's posting somebody exercising or something like that. But, but yeah, he's great to work with. Um, it's, it's awesome just having young energy with you. But then I do notice, as I, as I pointed out before, you know, we're both young and we're both black. But as a young black woman, there's a, there's a, a still a sense of dismissal that I still get.
You know what? No, seriously, I I I want to hear more about that, because once again, you know, to to even face the odds for you to even be in that seat is actually, you know, quite enormous. So kind of, you know, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but I want to, I want to hear more about that. Talk about that experience a little bit about my, about that, Michael, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I I think any black woman in politics would tell you this, um, but you know, sometimes you don't, you don't know till you know. You don't know till you're in there. And so some things I'll say, and it it might not be addressed. But then someone else might say the exact same thing, and 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 then, oh, oh, now, now you got it. Like, okay, so it's either mansplaining or eldersplaining or whatever, whatever type of another ism we can, we can put on there. And it's, it's interesting, and it's not, this isn't a new, you know, it's not a new concept, I'm not the first one. I know I won't be the last. But it's really, it's really an issue that we have to look at. You know, as far as elected officials, we all got there by the merit of the people. Um, and I don't, you know, I don't tout, tout the numbers of my win through those two elections. Um, but we did ran the runoff by seventy-five percent. And and did that on the merit of having community support, having the endorsement of all the other opponents. Yet I still, you know, either looked at as the little kid with my, with my uh, my two masters and my Ivy League education. Or someone who can explain something as a woman. Um, or someone who who doesn't know because because they're black, and it's, 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 sometimes it can be frustrating. But just all the more reason to just keep pressing and keep going forward, because I know why I'm doing it. It's it's for the, it's for the people, it's for the community, it's not, you know, to make me feel better to add to anything that I'm doing. But how can I get past this and still get my point heard and clarity on it? While just pushing for what I want for my people. So, um, that's just me calling it out. And if anybody's listening and you are a perpetrator of that, try to fix your ways uh to make sure that you're, you're really honoring and giving space to black women in the leadership spaces and roles that they have.
Right, right. Thank you for sharing all of that. And also, thank you uh for being transparent uh about that, because I I imagine uh that that can't be easy all the time. They, it can't be easy all the time. So I appreciate you uh being open about that.
Definitely.
No worries, no worries. Uh, once again, we're talking to Councilwoman Michaela Easter. No worries, no worries. Uh, once again, we're talking to Councilwoman Michael Easter Thomas here on uh The Startup Life. I wanna ask you this, you know, as you uh sit, you know, on the city council, District Seven, North Memphis, uh, for sure. You know, there's a lot of people who listen to the show, who are, who are from Memphis, love Memphis. And either, uh, they, they either, you know, live here in Memphis or they live abroad, uh, and they affectionately love it. Some want to come back, some say, I gotta get out of here. Make the case uh for why Memphis is a great place to start a business, Memphis is a great place to start a family, and all of the above. Make the case for Memphis, if you don't mind, Councilwoman.
So there's just so many things I could say, but Memphis is a bed of culture, of opportunity, of deep, rich history and tradition that you can't find anywhere else. You know, I, I mentioned that we are a chocolate city. And when you look at other metro- metropolitan cities that may have been the chocolate city, you see a, a stark difference in how gentrification has really impacted what's going on there. And that's not to say that gentrification is not here.
Right.
But we're still on the cusp of having that opportunity to intertwine progression in our residential, in our commercial areas. That's gonna be great for the people who live here to take part in that progress.
Right.
And progress doesn't have to look new. It can be shiny, but it can still be the same individuals in the same areas, in the same field. Um, Memphis has just so much great leadership. And I think that what we really just need is more support, more folks who love Memphis and folks who are really pour into the folks that are here. I, I think it's just so much yearning for progress here that once that light switch is, is flipped, it's, it's, we, I think we're almost there. I, I think we're almost there.
I hear that.
But once that light switch is flipped, I think Memphis is just gonna, it's gonna take off. And it's gonna be so, 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 so important that we do it for the majority of folks who need it. Being the impoverished, being the black folks here, being the folks that have been ostracized in these residential neighborhoods, um, business-wise, economically, commercially, because we're here. And, and it's like we're, we're just waiting. But we have so many rich resources and, and opportunities and they're, and they're here. But I, I don't think we're, we're not almost with that light switch yet. But, but I, I feel it. Some people, I, I feel it in my, in my shonda. I feel it.
I hear that.
That, that we're coming into a space that is all just gonna flow and mesh well together. And I think that that flows through economics, that flows through government, our school system. We're really seeing some changes here in Memphis that are really gonna benefit us in the long run.
Got you, got you. Thank you uh for sharing that. And I feel that too, um, about our city, Councilwoman. Cause uh, you know, I, I think for the longest time, we, we felt kind of uh left behind a lot of times. Or, you know, whether that be real or perception, a, a lot of times, uh, you know, you know how it is, perception is reality for a lot of people. And so a lot of times people say, oh, I can't do this in Memphis. I have to go somewhere else to do that. So I appreciate you sharing all of that, Councilwoman.
My pleasure.
No worries, no worries. So, you know, I, I wanna ask you this, and as we're wrapping up Startup Nation with uh Councilwoman uh Michael Easter Thomas. You know, a, a lot of times, you know, some of the, the most successful people in the world uh say that they couldn't do what they do without an amazing spouse. So I wanna ask you about my man Darren. You know, your, your amazing husband uh who's been in lockstep with you. I, I saw him on there uh on the campaign trail with you. You know, you gave a, a press conference a few weeks ago. He was right there uh by your side. Kind of talk about how important he has been uh on your journey. Kind of talk about uh, you know, some of the, the conversations that you guys have. Like maybe you, there's a big decision you gotta make uh when voting and stuff like that. Cause I imagine you, you have those conversations with like, Darren, what do you think? Kind of talk about him in a little bit.
Yeah, so Darren is amazing. Um, he is amazing. True, true, truly a Godsend. Um, just his whole mannerisms and, and his compassion and, and the way he cares for others is, is what really, really attracted me to him. Uh, but I know that's not the question you asked, but I put it in there. Um, but he's so supportive. Um, and you could, he is my first, my firsthand anything.
Right.
Um, I don't make a decision unless I talk to Jesus and Darren.
Right.
Uh, because, because I know that, one, he's intelligent, um, if ever. But he's also able to take different pieces of information and not be biased and really give different perspectives.
Got you.
So if I, you know, you got some people, you ask them and, you know, they're all for you, they're a hundred percent for you. They gonna tell you what looks best for you.
Right.
Um, but if I'm coming to Darren with something, he gives me my perspective, he gives me the government's perspective, he gives me the people perspective, and then he gives me his. And then he still ultimately leaves me to make the decision. Because he knows that that's what has to be done anyway, and he still gives me that, that freedom and that space to be my own person while still supporting me and not letting me get embarrassed or, you know, um, be ridiculed or, or make a staunchly wrong decision. So I'm, I'm glad that he's, he's here with me every step of the way. Um, not just for political assistance, but
Of course.
Just everything else that goes into it, you know, mental support, um, emotional support, and just that overall love and care. And then actually being able to just be a friend. Because with, you know, in different areas, sectors of work, friends don't come easily. And you always need someone that you could trust and that's also gonna trust and love you in a way that you don't feel defeated by the task you have at hand.
Got you.
And so I'm just, I'm just eternally grateful to have him. Um, if he'll have me, he can stay forever. But I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad to have him by my side and, and doing this work. So he's, and he's a constituent too. Um, and he's definitely gonna voice his opinion to me.
Right.
On what he don't like and, and what he doesn't think should happen in the area in which he lives and pays taxes. And, and I appreciate that too, because it, it just keeps giving me different perspectives. And I just can't make decisions in Memphis City Council based on what Michael thinks.
Right.
It, it takes everyone's, you know, experience and needs to really inform the decisions that I made.
I hear that. I hear that. Thank you for sharing that. And, and let him know that we all at Startup Nation uh say, uh, you know, uh hello to him. And we appreciate him for uh the work he does, uh, and not only assisting you, but doing his part for District Seven and Memphis as a whole. So thank you to uh the both of you for sure.
I will definitely let him know. He'll love to hear this.
No worries. So, you know, uh, Councilwoman, we're gonna go ahead and start wrapping up. I just wanna say, uh, thank you so much for coming on The Startup Life. We definitely enjoyed uh your insight to governing, how your, your, your decision-making process into leading one of the, uh, the, one of the major metropolitan areas uh in our country. So we definitely appreciate your time uh and your value uh and your knowledge uh on those matters for sure. And now I'm actually gonna turn the microphone over to you, because look, as we're dealing with COVID and everything going on around us, there's a lot of people that feel a little discouraged. If you would, Councilwoman, just kind of give us some words of encouragement to take us out for the day, if you don't mind.
So just words of encouragement through this, love on yourself, love on your family, and extend as much love as you can to your neighbors. This is going to take all of us. And I truly, truly believe that if we really are working together, thinking together, being safe together, even if we're apart, that we can really get through this pandemic. It's gonna take a lot of thinking outside the box. Um, things aren't gonna be the same.
Right.
But what is the same is that we're always gonna need each other to function in this society. So we have to love on ourselves, we have to do self-care, we need to, to keep up with ourselves, our health. We need to love on our families, need to make sure that we can help them in any ways of what they need. But then we also have to think about an extent of love to our neighbor, because we all play a role in this society that we're in. And so we can't, we can't let ourselves think someone not enough important that if they were to be gone or exed out of society by any changes that come forth, what does that mean overall for how our lives move? So we're all interconnected and we just need to make sure that we're extending and sharing the same optimism, love and care for ourselves, our family and our neighbors. And I think that we can get through this together.
I hear that. I hear that. Thank you so much. And that's gonna wrap up this session of The Startup Life. Councilwoman, always a pleasure to talk to you. Thank you so much for coming on the show.
This was awesome. I enjoyed it.
No worries. And as always, Startup Nation, if you have an idea, be about that life, The Startup Life. If you want to let us know what you think about our show, have an idea for a show topic, or like to advertise on our show, send us a message on the Startup Life Podcast Facebook page. And while you are there, like and follow our page as well. It's a great way for us to engage with you, Startup Nation, and really grow our community. The link is there in the show notes. Subscribe to the show as it can be heard on Apple Podcasts, Google Play, Stitcher Radio, Spotify, or even on your Facebook timeline, or any other platform you like to get your podcasts. If you are listening on Apple Podcasts and you find our content valuable, please give us a five-star rating as it will help us climb the charts and help more people find our show. You can also listen to the show on the Startup Life Podcast new website. There you will find the all-new Startup Blog where I write on many topics that are interesting and helpful to you on your path to entrepreneurship. And hey, if you have an idea, be about that life, The Startup Life.